Hello and welcome to the 2018 Scottsdale City Council Election Forum. As you know, Scottsdale voters will elect three from a field of five to City Council Tuesday, November 6th. I would like to first thank the taxpayers of Scottsdale for providing such a wonderful venue for us to come and debate the local issues that matter. Furthermore, I would like to thank both current and past elected leaders, municipal administrators, and the day-to-day employees of the city of Scottsdale for maintaining this great community asset we are all enjoying. My name is Terrence Thornton. I am the editor of the Scottsdale Independent and run the daily news feed at scottsdaleindependent.com. This is how tonight will work. We will begin with opening remarks from our candidates here. It's going to be in alphabetical order, and they get three minutes each. From there, we will move into moderated questions that I have prepared. During that time, staff will be providing index cards if you all would like to pose questions to candidates, one or the whole group. Following moderated questions, we will then move into those audience questions if you so desire, and following those, we will then close with closing remarks in reverse alphabetical order. So without further ado, Mr. Crawford, you are on the clock at three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Bill Crawford, a candidate for Scottsdale City Council. Thank you for coming tonight. It's nice to see all of the interest in our community. I have a vision. Number one, I believe that Scottsdale is the best city in America. And I think that we can be the best that we can be if we continue to make the right moves. Number one, if I'm involved, we're going to protect our unique character and our quality of life and honor the will of the residents with honesty and transparency in our local government. I will protect our priceless treasures and promote and protect our property values. I've got a lot of combined experience that I bring to the table to offer you, to work for you and serve you. I've been in business, I've been in law enforcement and community services for a long time, and those three things uniquely qualify me for this job. Here's my history. I grew up, I was born and raised in Yarra, Colorado. It's a little town way up in the mountains in Colorado, and it's bordered by national forests and wilderness areas. So I have a deep appreciation for wilderness and preserves and things of that nature that have been set aside. When I grew up in that town, I learned Western values, morals, and a work ethic that has driven me throughout my life. I also learned that honesty, integrity, and hard work and a little kindness go a long way. Over 40 years, I have owned and operated my own businesses. In 2012, I was ducked into the National Fitness Hall of Fame for my work and contributions in the fitness industry, and for the last 20 years, Basic Training Medics and Strength Training Center has been open in downtown Scottsdale, and I operate that with my wife, Debbie. Running a successful business and raising a family and being involved in the community has been a dream come true for us. As a former volunteer with MCSO, Maricopa County Sheriff's Posse, for over a decade, I understand how important it is to address public safety concerns, the needs of our first responders must be met, and my involvement in MCSO and all the training that I received was a very valuable experience that I can use in helping our city's public safety needs. During my time in Scottsdale, I have devoted myself to protecting our quality of life. I successfully advocated for citizens. My most noticeable achievement, notable achievement was working with the downtown entertainment district, trying to find compatibility between the bar district and the neighborhoods, and we did accomplish that. We were able to pass six ordinances, and now it's a much better, much safer place. If elected, I will continue to build on our city's success and I'll keep us moving forward by bringing people together from all sides to solve problems, by listening, not taking sides, and uniting residents together for a common solution. Our hu-- so--
Mr. Crawford? It's three minutes.
It is three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Little, Ms. Littlefield, excuse me. Three minutes to you.
Thank you. I'm Kathy Littlefield, and I am running for reelection to Scottsdale City Council. I have worked for the past four years to be your voice on council, representing you, the citizens of Scottsdale, on issues regarding your neighborhoods, your businesses, and your quality of life. I have been honored in this election to be endorsed by both the police and the firefighters and by the Coalition of Greater Scottsdale, or COGS, which is a citizen organization here that is dedicated to keeping our city special for our citizens. I am a Scottsdale native. I was raised here, and I went to school here. I graduated from ASU with a degree in business education. I've been married for 48 years to my husband, Bob, and we have two children and one absolutely adorable grandchild. Professionally, I have had a number of finance, accounting, and management positions. More recently, my husband and I opened and ran a successful computer business here in Scottsdale, and then, right now, I am the treasurer and part-owner of our flight skills business and flight training business called Flight Skills. I believe in being active in our community. Over the years, I have served in many community service organizations. Among them, I was elected president to our Civitan Club. That's an organization that helps handicap children. I served as treasurer for the North Scottsdale Little League and was treasurer for several after-school arts programs at Cochise Elementary School. Currently, I am a member of the DAR and the Mayflower Societies, where we focus on helping our service veterans and their families. I have many goals that I would like to accomplish during the second term on council. Strengthen our city finances, for one. Do a better job of supporting our first responders, and continuing the fight against overdevelopment, which lowers the quality of life of our residents. But my immediate goal is for voter approval in November to put a stop once and forever to the idea of allowing any commercial development inside the McDowell Sonoran Preserve without the permission and the consent of the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Littlefield. So one thing is, we want to have the night go as smooth as possible, so the fewer interruptions, the better. Ms. Millhaven?
Thank you, Terrence. Good evening. My name is Linda Millhaven. It has been my honor and my privilege to serve as your city council member for the last eight years, and I hope you will allow me to work on your behalf. When I ran the first time, I was motivated by something my grandmother used to tell me, which was, "If you're not moving forward, you're moving backward. The world will change around you if you stand still, and you want to step in and create the kind of change and the kind of future you want to see." And so that was why I ran eight years ago, and that's why I'm running again today. A little bit about myself. My family first came here in 1974. I graduated from Paradise Valley High School. It was the only high school in the district back then, to give you an idea of the changes we've seen. I then went out into the world to seek my fortune and graduated from college and got a master's in business administration and started my banking career. Came back here almost 30 years ago to make Scottsdale my home. I remembered this as an amazing community and was so pleased to see it was even more special, and so made my home here. For 12 years, I was community bank president here and served the people and the small businesses throughout Scottsdale, all the way from McDowell Road up to Carefree Highway. Yeah, as a banker in town, what do you typically do? You get involved with the Chamber, and that's what I did. And so I served on the Chamber's Board of Directors and was ultimately the chair of the Chamber. I was also a past chair of the Better Business Bureau and served on the Executive Committee of the National Organization of Better Business Bureaus. During that time, I also was a chair of Scottsdale Arts, formerly the Scottsdale Cultural Council, and you may know them. They run the Center for the Performing Arts and the Museum of Modern Art, as well as the Public Art Program. Because communities, while the business community and our economy is important, that's only one aspect that makes for a rich community. The arts speak to the heart and the soul of our community, and that balance is so important. And I'm so grateful to have had the opportunity to serve in all of those capacities. So then, that brings me to my time on city council. And so, as your councilwoman, the priorities that I've put in place is to make sure we're maintaining the quality of life in our neighborhoods, that I bring my business experience and my leadership, my volunteer leadership experience, to promote private investment, to maintain a robust local economy, to create jobs and keep our taxes low, and to keep an eye on the future. I think one way I've done that over the eight years that I'm particularly proud of is the work I did with the neighbors surrounding the Fashion Square. The Fashion Square is a huge tax generator. About half of our general fund revenues come from sales tax, so they're an important element of our community that keeps taxes low. I was able to work with the neighbors in order to compromise and make that a more, make that a better project. And I can tell you more about that as we go along. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Millhaven. Mr. Smith, to you.
Thank you, Terrence. My name is David Smith, and I am running for a second term on the city council. And if you want to know more about me, I would urge you to go to my website, councilmandavidsmith.com. I may be the only councilperson up here who can boast that I was born and raised in a log cabin, if that means anything to you. But I was. We lived on a farm down in southern Missouri, and I went to public schools. I had the good fortune of going to Northwestern University, though, for the education that I obtained. I got a bachelor's degree in accounting from there, a master's degree in finance from the Kellogg School, and went on to get a CPA and spent a career in corporate finance with the public and private sector. In that 40-year career, it was capped off with a curious position of CFO, Chief Financial Officer, at the Tennessee Valley Authority. I say curious because that's a government-owned company. And then, following that, the Chief Financial Officer position at Amtrak, the nation's only interstate railroad, also owned and operated by the government. I moved, we moved, my wife Diana and I, to Scottsdale in 1986. We were attracted, as many of you probably were, by the beauty of the city that appeals to tourism, and in the process of appealing to tourism, we all get to enjoy that benefit as well. We have a footprint in all parts of town. We initially lived in the McCormick Ranch area. Our daughter and two eldest grandsons were born and raised, well, at least part of their life, down in south Scottsdale, and now we're up in the northern part of town. We also have a business, had a business, in the city. Scottsdale Air Park News and several ancillary businesses related to that, which gives me a unique perspective on government as it relates to business, both small business that we owned and large businesses that I was a part of. After I retired, I became involved in the city because it was 2008 and we were looking for a way to balance the budget, so I joined the Budget Review Commission. Our recommendation was that we should have a charter officer financial position. Somehow or another, I got lassoed into making that happen and was here as the city, at the city, as an employee for three years or more. And in that period of time, I realized I could also function effectively, I thought, as a councilperson, because my vision, my view of the city, I thought, aligned pretty well with my fellow citizens. And so, I ran for council. I was endorsed then, four years ago, as I am now, by three dozen and a half former councilmembers and mayors. These are all people that you elected to run your city. They are the people who built a lot of the vision that we have today, things like the Indian bin wash that was envisioned by Bill Walton.
Mr. Smith?
So I'm asking for four more years to complete the tasks that we've begun. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Whitehead, to you.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Solange Whitehead. My husband and I moved here from San Diego in 1996, and we fell in love with everything Arizona and Scottsdale in particular, so we stayed, and we raised our three kids here. I am an electrical engineer, but I've done many other types of work. I have been in startup companies. I have done real estate, and I also was an executive director for a nonprofit for 10 years. And in that capacity, the Arizona Wildlife Federation named me their Conservationist of the Year. I also served as a preserve commissioner when we were acquiring land and creating the preserve. In all these different careers, I've stayed true to three different principles. One is, know who you represent. Know, care, work very hard on their behalf. Number two is to be honest and transparent to all. And number three, be financially responsible, because no matter how much you care about whoever you represent, if you waste their money, you do them harm. There's no place that these principles matter more than in a city government. And yet, this past two years, we've witnessed a city council that was willing to develop preserved land, misuse preserved tax dollars, and deny the public a vote, and this breached all three principles. So that's how I became a candidate. There has been historically a very strong partnership between the citizens and the leaders and all stakeholders in this community, and that's the root of our value. So we need to restore that if we want to perpetuate our value. Today, we are seeing a financial crisis that's created by these misaligned priorities and the bond being broken. So, as your city councilwoman, I would like to work very hard to bring back the residents at the table and restore a general plan, a general plan that provides a vision of where we want to be in five or 10 years and gives us a map on how to get there. I would like to restore growth, not just any growth, but quality growth that levels the playing, or tilts the playing field in favor of quality developers with quality projects that enhance everybody's lives, existing residents and future residents. I would like to work hard to minimize debt, because every dollar we borrow is a dollar we don't have for services we need. And I would like to work hard to keep our taxes low and our quality of life hard, our quality of life high, because this is what attracts new businesses, and this is what attracts first homeowners and second homeowners. So these are my goals as your city councilwoman. Thank you very much.
I'm actually done. Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Let's refrain from the clapping as much as we can. So we're going to start with moderated questions. If you have a question as part of the audience, our publisher, Charlene Bissin, the lady in green there, will have, I'll get yours, don't worry, will have index cards for you to fill out if you so desire. So let's start with something to get us warmed up. Solange, thank you for bringing up quality of life, because the first question is going to be to you. So for this first round, we're going to go in order, in reverse alphabetical order, but after that, I'll probably switch it up just to keep us on our toes. So, Ms. Whitehead, first question to you. What do you believe to be the number-one threat to the quality of life experienced by those who call Scottsdale home? And, if elected, what are you going to do about it? One minute.
Thank you. Oh, so residents that I've spoken to do not feel like they're being heard, and planning and zoning is certainly an area where that's most visible. So there's a sidelining of residents, and this is bad government, but it's also bad economics. We have to remember that everything of value in this city was brought to us by resident ideas, resident-friendly government, and voter approval, whether that's the Green Belt, the stadium, our focus on arts and the preserve. So, the first job up is to bring the residents back into the fold and get that general plan that I just mentioned. A general plan is a map of how, it's an agreement with our citizens and a map on how we want to get to the future we, that we want. And so, that is 14 or 15 years out of date, so that will be my first priority, is get that back on the table.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Mr. Smith, to you.
Thank you. Well, many of you who know me know that what I'm going to answer. I think the number-one priority is the fiscal instability of the city. It's the reason I ran a year, four years ago, and it's the reason I'm running again, is to restore the fiscal sustainability to the city. We have not, as a city, reinvested in ourselves, reinvested in the infrastructure to the degree and dollar magnitude that we should. And now we're seeing the consequences. If you try to travel across 68th Street, you'd be lucky to be able to do so, because only two lanes out of four are open. And if you try to travel out here, under the Plaza on Drinkwater Boulevard, that would be impossible, because that one is actually closed all lanes because of fear that it will actually collapse. This has happened over a period of years. It is a serious problem. It would be my priority then, as it is now, restoring fiscal sustainability.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Millhaven, to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I echo what Councilman Smith said. The financial strength of the city is critical to making sure we have the tax revenues we need to pay for services. But your city council has done an amazing job coming through the Great Recession. When I was elected the first time in 2010, we didn't know how far down revenues were going to go. In fact, we went from a high of $110 million a year in local sales taxes to $77 million, a third reduction in what we had been seeing. In fact, since that time, we are just back to sales tax revenues at current, at the old rates now, and the cumulative loss over that time was $170 million. We were able to maintain a AAA bond rating, which is an independent third-party's evaluation of the financial strength of this city, thanks to the fact that we cut staff, we cut programs, and we cut salaries, and we were able to weather the financial crisis with great strength. But now, we need to invest in our infrastructure.
Perfect timing. Ms. Littlefield, to you.
I believe that one of the main things we need to be looking at is, how can we sustain the quality of life for our citizens that they currently enjoy? And I think that it's becoming a real problem for them as we continue to overdevelop and overbuild out. The first thing that we need to do is follow the current citizen-approved general plan and not allow that to be changed every time someone comes along, buys a piece of land, and then assumes it's their right to change the zoning and the land use to however they want it. I think it's important that we take a look and look at this and say, "No, this is not an automatic right to a new owner of a piece of land in Scottsdale." That it needs to be earned, and there needs to be equal and better value given back to the citizens themselves if they get an upgrade, if they get an upzoning. And that's something that we haven't been doing. It's almost like the developers can assume that they get this because they just bought a piece of land. I've had a number of them come to me and say, "Well, if we don't get this, I can't make a profit." Well, then they overpaid for the land at the current value.
Thank you, Ms. Littlefield. Mr. Crawford, to you.
Well, clearly, the number-one responsibility for any municipality is public safety. Public safety costs money, and we have a huge financial problem here in Scottsdale, to the tune of $800 million. And there's several reasons that we got there. Number one, we had a recession, a downturn. We didn't have the property taxes, we didn't have the sales taxes, we didn't have the bed taxes to keep up with it. Number two, we failed to pass appropriate bonds that we needed during this period to keep up with our failing infrastructure. With a billion dollars' worth of capital improvements, it costs $100 million a year to keep up with these things. It's been eight years, nine years, and that's why we have dilapidating bridges and our downtown park is closed. And this has far-reaching effects much greater than the infrastructure itself. Think of the tourists that come down here this winter, and they see our bridges closed. They see that they can't go into the park and take their picture taken on the love statue. They see that we might not be able to have some of the festivals that we normally have. We've got to fix this, and we've got to fix it immediately. From my perspective, that's our biggest problem. How do we solve it? We solve it by having a council that is unified together and creates a transparent financial package, line item, totally aware with line item expenses and light item budgets that we can all agree on. Then we present it to the voters, and we get it passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Question to you. Now, remember, I might jump around. Why do you believe you should be granted the privilege of representing and setting local policy for the community of Scottsdale? To you, Mr. Crawford.
Two in a row?
Two in a row.
Okay, well, hey--
Just wanted to give you those extra minutes.
I've got to tell you, I wasn't listening. Because I thought I was off the hook for a few minutes.
Okay. So we'll start again. Mr. Crawford, why do you believe you should be granted the privilege of representing and setting local policy for the community of Scottsdale? One minute to you.
Pay attention, in class. So I think I just have so much experience in the private sector, in community service, in law enforcement. I've worked with downtown. I've worked on citywide issues for 20 years, if you've been watching my activities in town. Everything from the entertainment district to Westworld to trying to force the city to open up trailheads and parking in the preserve. It was influential in Coronado High School getting remodeled, saying that opening up the training facility for the Giants in the El Dorado neighborhood was a bad idea, that we could be better and we could find a better spot for that. 10 years of service in the sheriff's office has given me a lot of insight and training in law enforcement. And remember, that's still the number-one priority of any municipality. And I think we're doing a great job, but there's someone on the council that has insight and that can be helpful. Also, it's been a long time since anyone was elected to the city council who lived south of Shea Boulevard. I've lived and worked in downtown Scottsdale--
Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
--for a long time, 20 years. Thank you.
Ms. Whitehead, why don't you go next?
Okay, thank you. So the job of city council is to represent the constituents, and the best way to do that is to first know your constituents. Now, I've been going door-to-door for the preserve for many, many decades, or 15 years, I guess, in this city. But since January, I went right back at it. I've been knocking on doors. I've been talking to thousands of residents. So I can tell you firsthand that our community is first united, and they are in agreement of what their needs are, what they want, and what their concerns are. So I'm going to share some of that with you. They want good government that values their tax dollars. And so, yes, we've had a downturn, but no, we did not do a good job with the tax dollars that did come in. They want to be heard. They want leaders that unite us, not divide us. They want a preserve preserved. They want development that has a vision and is reviewed and has citizen input. And they overwhelmingly think and worry that special interests are ruining our democracy with campaign contributions. We have a remarkable community.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead.
Oh, I'm done.
Ms. Millhaven, to you.
Thank you. As I mentioned, I bring extensive business experience and extensive leadership, volunteer leadership experience. In addition to, I think, helping support the fiscal strength of the community, I believe that I have been able to work with neighbors and developers to create quality development that balances both the business community and the needs of neighbors. When the Fashion Square wanted to rezone, I met with neighbors at the Optima at Highland and Scottsdale Road several times, and the neighbors at the waterfront, and was able to negotiate with the developer to say, to get them to reduce some of the height, to get them to create more open space. The neighbor said, "Can we create a courtyard like we have at the corridor? Absolutely." "Can we dictate the size of the trees? Absolutely." And so I think that the work I've done and learned, that we all want the same thing, which is an amazing quality community, and we need to do it with balance and respect, and we need to start from knowing that we all share that similar goal and not turn things into yes-and-no questions, but rather ask how, and let's discuss how we can accomplish our joint goals.
Thank you, Ms. Millhaven. Ms. Littlefield, to you.
Thank you. As a city councilwoman, I have spent a great deal of time listening and speaking with the citizens of Scottsdale. I believe that's a crucial part of my job. In order to represent you, which is my job, I have to know what you're thinking, and I have to know what you want Scottsdale to grow into and to develop into in the future. I also need to know what you don't want to see in Scottsdale. I take my slogan, "Your Voice on Council," extremely literally, and I do my best to represent you. That doesn't mean that I will agree with each and every person that comes down the pike, but it does mean that I will search for the answers to issues that I believe will best represent you, the citizens, and what you want for your city. That is my focus, and that will continue to be my focus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Littlefield. Mr. Smith, to you.
Thank you. I was afraid I was going to get left out on this one.
Oh, I wouldn't do that.
You know, the truth of it is, I don't think any of us should be granted the privilege of representing. I think we have to earn that privilege. And I hope that the people of Scottsdale will feel I have earned that privilege. I brought to the city a financial expertise when I joined the city staff as the treasurer and helped put together the unique form of governance that we have in Scottsdale, where a financial representative reports directly to the city. And I think I served the citizens well in that role, and that's why I ask whether I had earned the right to be elected to council. And I was, four years ago. I think what the citizens are finding is that I bring to the council a financial expertise to watch their dollars and watch the dollars on projects. I have served them, I think, with diligence, certainly with integrity and with openness. And I've tried to, I've tried to represent all the-- And I've tried to, I've tried to represent all the citizens. As you know, that's difficult to do sometimes because the citizens are often divided on an issue. And so, it's our responsibility as council members to look for the best community, the best adjudication, if you will, of the issue when the community is divided. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Now, we'll move into more advanced questions. There are 118 Scottsdale infrastructure projects city leaders have identified carrying estimated cost of $810 million, but elected leaders readily admit municipal needs exceed existing funding sources and mechanisms. Last May, by a four-to-three measure, Scottsdale City Council approved a resolution ultimately destined to materialize in a ballot measure where city officials will ask for a 10% increase to local sales tax in hopes of raising just over $70 million to help pay for transportation projects. In all, city officials speculate the sales tax measure will make the municipality eligible for $171 million in matching funds from Maricopa County to meet the tenants of its arterial lifecycle program. And here's the question. The result of critical infrastructure costs continue to emerge throughout pockets of Scottsdale. How did certain streets, roads, and bridges get to this point? Mr. Smith, we'll start with you.
Thank you. And I think you said it was a 10% increase in sales tax. If you did, that's
.10.
.1
Tenth of a percent.
.1% increase in sales tax.
Very confusing.
We have a tremendous backlog of uncompleted and critical financial needs in the city in the infrastructure area. And you've heard the council talk about it. The council appointed a committee, a subcommittee of themselves, three members, myself, councilmember Phillips and councilwoman Courtney, to look at the infrastructure needs. With the staff, we came up with a list of almost 600, 650 million critical needs that have to be addressed. And this happens because we haven't made investments for the past 10 years equal to the depreciation of the assets. This .10 tax increase, I'll be supporting that. I urge you to do it as well because it does give us a little bit of money to meet these needs. But bear in mind, it's only going to generate about $10 million a year. It's a fraction of what we need to be reinvesting in the city. And we'll be back to you urging you to take care of your city in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Whitehead, how about you take this one?
Thank you. So, Scottsdale's financial crisis is, has to do with poor choices and lack of fiscal restraint, as well as other issues. We have to simply uphold, first, we have to start by upholding the current zoning and code requirements. This alone would help us financially. For instance, when a developer comes to us and says they want higher buildings and more density, the city of Scottsdale, the residents, we're supposed to get investment. And instead, all too often, like we saw in June, we're giving $22 million, in that case, to the developer. So, these are the types of decisions that are hurting our finances. When it comes to maintaining bridges, and when it comes to keeping our streets up, if we don't change the zoning, or if we don't change the development fees to cover these costs, once again, we don't have the money to do these projects. As well, if we allow our tax dollars to be used on special interest projects, projects that don't directly benefit the community, we also run short of funds. The bottom line is, we have a bucket full of holes when it comes to our tax dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Thank you, Ms. Whitehead.
Oh, sorry.
Kathy, how about you take it?
Thank you. Well, it's, it's, it's correct that we do have a lot of projects that need a lot of work here in Scottsdale. Problem is, we're not putting aside the money every year into the capital funds to do the maintenance and the upkeep of those projects. Therefore, when we go and look at something and says, oh, jeez, we need to fix this street, we don't have the money to do it. We need a systematic and complete budgetary allotment every year that goes into the maintenance and upkeep of our streets. When we do this overdevelopment throughout all the city, oftentimes, the buildings themselves go, and the streets are put in, but it all requires ongoing maintenance. And the, and the properties that the city owns, and it includes the sewer, it includes the water, it includes the police, because we'll need more people on the police, we'll need more fire stations, we'll need more firemen, we'll need more cop cars. All of these things are added infrastructure that continues over the years, and also needs to be maintained and then replaced and maintained. And we don't do an adequate job of keeping track of that and putting aside the money so that we have it when it's needed. That's what we need to do as an ongoing budgetary thing, and that's why I also support relooking at our budgets and making sure that we're doing that in an adequate and accurate manner.
Thank you, Ms. Littlefield.
Thank you.
Ms. Millhaven, two minutes, with another minute for retort.
Thank you. As I said earlier, coming out of the Great Recession, we lost $170 million in sales tax revenues. And in order to keep vital services available to us, like police and fire, we deferred spending, and some of that was on maintenance. And if folks think that we have been wasting money, I'd really like for them to tell us what we've been wasting money on. So, to give you some context, our total operating budget for the current year is $276 million. We spend more than half of that on police and fire. Another $45 million is fees for services that are covering their costs. And so, when you take that all into account, that leaves us with $88 million for streets, libraries, parks, senior centers, the court system. We're able to put away in the current year $12 million for capital. But if folks think we have been irresponsible and wasted your money, I would like us to tell us what you would like us to cut out from the budget in order to find the money to fund infrastructure. I'd also like to take a moment and respond to some of what folks have said about development. Every time we consider a development project, the applicant pays the city the fee, and the city hires experts that evaluate the roads, evaluate the water lines, evaluate the sewer lines. And if their project is not supported by the current infrastructure, the developer pays for the improvement. And then, they pay property taxes on their improved project, and the people who live and work in those projects pay taxes to support the ongoing infrastructure. So, it is not true that development, that we are paying for development, development pays for itself. In addition, reference was made to a project. I am very excited and very proud to have supported the Nationwide project. They are going to spend $33 million to build infrastructure. We are going to rebate to them $21 million of sales tax they're going to generate. That's $11 million to the good the citizens of Scottsdale didn't need to pay for, and it's a $9 billion economic impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Millhaven. Bill, one minute for response, one minute for retort, two minutes total.
Okay, first of all, let me do the retort while it's fresh in my mind. I, I guess we have diametrically opposed positions here, and that's why we're having a debate and a race. Development is not the problem. Development is exactly the solution for the problem. These are the, the financial vehicles that will get us out of this hole that we're in. When developers come in and they invest in their businesses and their residential properties, and Mace Rich spends $300 million remodeling their shopping center for the future of Scottsdale, these are good things. These are great things. If we didn't have development, and we didn't give these developers the latitude that they needed, we'd still be living in, in adobe houses with dirt streets. And that's, we've passed that point. We're beyond that. We are now in a position where we have to compete with other cities, not only in the state of Arizona and in the Phoenix area, but around the country. So, development is the answer, not the problem. And again, when developments come in here, they pay for their infrastructure. They pay impact fees. If it's apartments, they pay a continued income with the sales tax on the apartments. So, those, those are good things. And now, I forgot what the question was.
You ready?
Yes.
You ready? "The result of critical infrastructure costs continue to emerge throughout pockets of Scottsdale. How did certain streets, roads, and bridges get to this point?" Let's do this one in 45 seconds.
We got there because it was a complex problem. We had the recession. We had budget restraints. And through that recession, we, we managed to keep our, our AAA bond rating. So, somebody did a pretty good job balancing all this on a financial high wire. And then we had the opposition to the bonds, and that was, that was terrible. The city, employees were vilified. The community was told that you couldn't trust the city with, with the money. And I think we can do better than that. I think we need to work together to make a bond pass, package that can be agreed upon by the council and approved by the voters. Every now and then, a business has to go to the bank and borrow money. We've, we've overextended that period. We need to do this right away.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Ms. Littlefield, response?
One minute.
Yeah, this, this again comes down to what I said at first, where I try to listen to the residents. When we were talking about Nationwide, and we talked to the state land department, where they wanted to sell the land so that they could get a better price with Nationwide buying it, which was okay, I went to the open house meetings, and I talked to the neighbors. They were terribly upset. They hadn't been told about any of this, and the open house meetings were within two weeks of the final decision. The decisions had already been made. They had no input. They were furious. They knew that. They actually hired a bus to bring the people from Greyhawk down here to the city council to complain about what the process was. The city had not done its process, its due diligence. We had one report from the airport commission, which said, don't do it, which we ignored. We hadn't done the traffic studies. We hadn't done the light studies. We hadn't done any of the, of the due diligence that the city itself requires of itself to do. Now Nationwide says, well, we'll put in the roads, and we'll put in all the infrastructure that we need in order to build our stuff, but you can pay us back $21 million of that.
Thank you, Ms. Littlefield. Sorry.
Where are we getting it?
Solange, one minute to you.
Okay, so, we do have fees. I didn't say we didn't have development fees. We don't have fees that cover development costs. So, let me give you an example. In the town of Gilbert, any developer that wants to build, they have to provide money for a future fire station. In this town, that's not how it works. You and I pay for it, the taxpayers that live here today. Second of all, the $21.9 million given to Nationwide for a couple of roads, that's 25% almost of the entire police budget. This is not managing our tax dollars responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Would you like to retort? One minute, Mr. Smith.
I think the, we've got to be careful listening to rhetoric here instead of facts. I mean, somebody can say we have lack of fiscal restraint, we've got special interest groups, and we're ignoring maintenance and so on. The reality, folks, is that we have a huge capital need. It is collectively all our property. We own it, the streets, the buildings, the storm drains. It all belongs to us, the citizens. It doesn't belong to the developers. And once it wears out, and it's doing so at the rate of $100 million a year, we have to step up and make the investments to fix the infrastructure. $10 million a year is not going to do it. And it is not an issue of special interest groups or lack of fiscal restraint. The reason the past three bond issues have not succeeded is because the council has been divided. In fact, several councilmembers were actively opposing it, saying it was bait and switch, saying it was bloated. The reality is, and that's why I'm on the council, that's why other people are on the council, look at the facts and not the rhetoric. We have a huge need. We've only begun to address it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Millhaven, you get us going for this one. What do you make of this sales tax measure headed for the ballot? One minute to you.
You mentioned earlier that the vote on the sales tax measure was four to three, and I dissented on that. But what we all, what all seven of us agreed was, we do not have enough money to fund our infrastructure needs, and the only difference was in how. I thought a property tax was a more prudent way to do it than a sales tax, but I am supporting a yes vote for the sales tax. We have $170 million of taxes that citizens of Scottsdale have paid to the county as part of a transportation tax, and in order to reclaim that, we need to have $70 million in matching funds to do that. As I mentioned to you earlier, we've got $88 million after police fire to do that. We don't have the money to do it. So, we need that sales tax to raise the $70 million in matching funny, matching funds so we can reclaim that 170 million. I hope folks will vote yes on question one. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Millhaven. Mr. Smith, to you. One minute.
Well, we have touched on this several times, and I think I've described it as too little, too late. The problems with this, and by the way, I was one of the people that opposed it as well, in spite of that, I would now urge you to pass it because of the desperate needs of the city. But it is the wrong kind of tax to impose. It gave a free ride to business. Why do we give a free ride to business? It gave a free ride to out-of-state investors. Why don't they have to pay something? It put the entire burden on citizens. And it's going to be a tax that collects the money from you before we ever build the project, completely backwards of what it would be if we'd done this with a property tax request. It's our responsibility as citizens, as councilmembers, in my judgment, to tell you what the needs are. It is then your privilege of telling us whether you choose to fund those needs. But we should not be sticking our finger in the air and saying, I don't think the citizens are ready for this, so let's not ask them. And we certainly shouldn't be approaching this as a divided council, saying on one hand, we think it's needed, and on the other councilmember is saying, it's not needed at all. You just need to cut costs.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Mr. Crawford, one minute to you.
Okay, well, this is an easy one. So, here we are with dilapidating infrastructure. We can't afford to pay for it. They've turned down the bonds, and we're desperate for financing. And here comes Maricopa County with a dream-about deal. I'll give you $100 million net if you give us 70 million. Who wouldn't, who wouldn't take that deal? So, we pay 70 million. We get back 170 million of money that's already been put aside for this, and it's a win-win-win. I'm for it. It's not the total solution, but it'll help us out of the hole we're in.
Thank you, Bill. Solange, to you. One minute.
Okay, so, Scottsdale taxpayers, it's our money. I'm going to vote yes for the transportation tax, but I don't think Scottsdale taxpayers should have been put between a rock and a hard place. The reason that we have to tax ourselves is because we have been, we, the taxpayers, have been paying into this fund for 14 years. And everybody on city council knew that we needed $10 million a year set aside in order to retrieve our investment. But they chose not to do that. And so, now, we're being told, if you don't pass this tax, and it is a 10-year tax, and it's not a big tax, but if you don't pass this tax, we're going to lose $170 million of your money. I don't think that's a good way to run a business, and I don't think it's a good way, way to run a government. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Ms. Littlefield, to you. One minute.
Thank you. Well, when this came before the council, and councilman Phillips suggested the one, it's actually one-tenth of 1% sales tax for 10 years, to raise $70 million over that time, so that we can have a matching income stream, which is required by the Maricopa County Department in order for us to get our $170 million that we've already paid in, or will have already paid in by 2020. That gives us a lot of money that we can use toward our transportation needs, towards our streets, our curbs, our gutters, our sidewalks, our bike paths, our walking paths and trails. So, yes, I voted, and I seconded his motion because I think this makes so much sense, so much common sense, that it can actually have a chance of passing. The citizens, they will say, yes, they want their money back. Because if we don't have a matching income stream to get this money back from Maricopa County, that $170 million of your tax money that you've already spent, or you've already paid into, will go to other cities. Peoria will get their sidewalks fixed. Phoenix will get their roads patched. But Scottsdale will not get that money back.
Thank you, Ms. Littlefield.
So, if we want it, we need to, we need to say yes to question one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Littlefield. Perfect timing. American politics has become an incredibly divisive topic, and Scottsdale politics is no exception. Do you believe you can help to bring more civility to the conversations surrounding Scottsdale politics? If so, how? Ms. Littlefield, one minute to you.
Sorry about that. I don't think that incivility is really the problem. I think a lot of the problem is different viewpoints and different opinions on what we should be doing and where we should be going. But as far as I'm concerned, with my dealings with my fellow councilmen, I, you know, there's not incivility there at all. We're, we're very polite. But with, it's a matter of the government that we have and the ability to meet each other halfway, and to be able and willing to talk to each other and to make compromises in positions so that we can come up with issues and answers to issues that maybe are better than any one individual had to begin with. We're not doing that enough, and that, I think, is something that we do need to work on. But I think it's important you realize something here. Our form of government in the United States is not meant to be tidy and neat. It's a scrappy form of government, where everybody kind of throws everything on the table, and we hunt around to find what we think is a good solution here or there. on the table and we hunt around to find what we think is a good solution here or there and put it together and make it work. And it's supposed to be where everyone can have an input and everyone can have a say in what happens. The citizens, the council makes the decision, yes. But the council too needs to be able to
Thank you, Ms. Littlefield.
Look at different options and choose from those.
Thank you, Ms. Littlefield. Mr. Crawford, to you. One minute.
I think, I think dialogue is a, is a real key and not personalizing the differences that we have. You know, we're all familiar with a campaign that's taking place right now, and, and the tactics that have been used really on both sides are deplorable. We don't need to stoop to those levels to solve a problem. And, you know, I met a guy at a, at a function the other night, and he recognized me and we were talking, but he didn't know where he recognized me from. And after five minutes or so, he says, well, where do I know you from? I says, I'm the guy that you've been writing all those terrible things about in the newspaper. And he, and he bowed back. He got red in the face, and we found that we had a lot of common interests. We had a lot of things that we could agree on. And all of a sudden, he's not writing bad things about me anymore because we boiled it down to human relationships. And that's what we have to do with these conflicts that we have. Take the personal accounts, attacks out of it. Let's work together to compromise. Nobody's going to get 100% of what they want, but we can make compromise. And I've got a proven track record of breathing, bringing people together that were in fierce opposition and making compromise, and we go forward and it works.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Ms. Millhaven, to you.
I agree with Councilwoman Littlefield. You know, the council as a body is, is very civil and works well together. And I do think that we look for compromise. I think the fact that it was a four-three vote about whether to put a sales tax on the ballot or a property tax on the ballot to fund our, our road improvements, all seven of us came together to support the decision of the majority. So I see the council working together collaboratively and looking for solutions. What I hope, what's unfortunate, however, and as public electeds, you know, we deserve to know what you think, good, bad, or indifferent. What's unfortunate to see is what happens on social media when folks stand up to disagree. There's a difference between being disrespectful and disagreeing. Two very intelligent, reasonable people can look at the same set of facts and come to completely different conclusions without being liars. And so I think if we can think about where we agree and, and stop making it a yes or no question and look for ways to say, how can we achieve our common goals? And we must model that ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Millhaven. Mr. Smith, to you.
I think everybody's used the word compromise, and it is important. You know, one of the interesting things when I got on council, at least after spending 40 years in the private sector, was to experience frankly, the, the incivility of the exercise and the incivility of a lot of citizens. This doesn't happen in the business world. At least, it doesn't happen to the same degree it does here. Otherwise, you'd never have a business economy working. We as a community are supposed to be all striving for excellence. And you have elected representatives. If you don't like them, unelect them, I suppose, is your choice. But it needs to be a process that's based, as it is in, in the real world, if you will, on honesty and based on facts, not based on soundbites and trumped-up charges that are not provable. I've tried to deal in my term on council with only the truth, the facts, and honestly address those things. So I urge my colleagues to do the same, and I think from that will come a compromise and a better government for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Whitehead, to you.
Oh, there we go. Okay, I do want to address, I do think that everybody on city council is very civil. I think there just needs to be more priority given to citizens. But I do want to address, address the notion that citizens are divided or uncivil. This is completely not true. Anybody who thinks that, come door-to-door with me. Our citizens are incredibly kind, incredibly united, and nobody's telling me an idea that makes them richer. They're talking about ways, good old-fashioned common ways to make our community richer. But when you have citizens that have to collect 37,000 signatures to protect a land, they voted five times to acquire and save, that tells you that maybe the city council is no longer aligned with the citizens. That's a problem. Do people get angry? Sure. It's their tax dollars. It's their public land. But I have not seen anybody on the citizen side being uncivil. However, we do have a no campaign whose sole purpose is to deceive the very voters who are trying desperately to protect their land. We also have anonymous bloggers that attack citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Again, I understand. All right, good job. So now, I've got to preface for the next question. Community activists behind both the Protect Our Preserve and No DDC campaigns provided Scottsdale City Hall more than 37,000 signatures, forcing Proposition 420 onto the upcoming November ballot. Proposition 420, if approved, will require voter approval for all commercial construction and usage of earmarked conservation dollars within the Scottsdale McDowell, within the McDowell Sonoran Preserve. Solange, start us off.
Okay, so
Hold on. Well, first, I'm going to, I gotta ask a question first.
Yeah, you can ask.
You ready? I, oh, I know you do. What is your impression of how Proposition 420 will change the provisions within the Scottsdale City Charter? And are you in support or opposed to the proposition? Start us off.
Okay, great. Well, Prop 420, all it does is it takes 15 years of city protocol and it makes it the law. So for 15 years, every city council majority has been trustworthy with our preserve and our preserved tax dollars. What we found out today is that four people on city council can actually allow our preserve to be developed. So passing 420 doesn't change anything. It just formalizes what we've always done here in the city. So of course, I support and will be voting yes for Prop 420. Anybody who cares about public land, anybody who is a fiscal conservative would know that a $1 billion investment like this preserve needs that extra layer of protection. And I just want to say something I heard last week when I was going door-to-door. I was two blocks north of Camelback, and I met a woman. It was her birthday. She had just turned 85. And I told her what I was up to, and she said, oh goodness, I worry about the preserve every single day. I am so worried that the voters are going to be fooled by those no signs. 85, two blocks north of Camelback. Thank you for our citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Ms. Millhaven, to you.
The folks on both sides of 420 deeply love and cherish and want to protect the preserve. The difference is how. No one wants commercial development in our preserve, and in fact, our charter today prohibits it. Our charter today reads that the city shall not convey ownership, grant an easement, lease lien, or take any other real property interest in the preserve. We cannot have commercial development now. In addition of the 30,000 acres, over 15,000 acres were purchased with state matching funds from growing smarter. It must be kept and preserved in perpetuity. What it does do is it limits the city's ability because the charter amendment says it must be kept in its natural state and only restoration, appropriate restoration. I think we're going to make attorneys rich trying to figure out what the natural state is in an evolving ecology and what appropriate restoration is.
Thank you, Ms. Millhaven. Mr. Smith, to you.
I think the question was, what's this going to do to the charter? And my concern is that it will change the charter in ways that we should not be doing. I share the concern. I'm opposed to commercial development in the preserve. I am in favor of developing the preserve as it was intended by the voters in 2005 with what they called improvements thereto, trying to change the preserve into a recreational preserve so that the citizens could enjoy it. Adding trails, trailheads, parking lots, whatever, horse barns. So all of these things were added, but I don't think the citizens meant, and stopped there. I think they meant to make improvements thereto that would benefit all the citizens. And in 2007, a proposal was brought forward to the city council, and there was great applause for that proposal. That happened to be a desert discovery center, much bigger than we're talking about today. 30 acres, amphitheater. What we're talking about today is whether it's a desert discovery center or desert edge, or whether it is some other amenity we haven't even thought of, a way to make the preserve usable, accessible, and enjoyable by all the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Crawford, to you. One minute.
I've reviewed the, the proposal, and I think that the changes proposed to the charter are minimal and specific to the preserve itself. I don't think it extends beyond that. So the taxpayers voted five times to raise $1 billion to buy the preserve. The intent was to preserve the land for perpetuity. I believe if there's going to be a fundamental change to the land use of the preserve, it should be decided by the same people that voted to tax themselves to buy it. Now, am I for Prop 20 or not? It depends on who you ask. Funny thing, if you ask the No DDC people, they'll tell you I'm not for it. They say there's only two candidates that have supported that. Actually, there's three. I've been for this from day one. It's in my position statements on my website. It's in the voters guide, and I've made this statement at forums because I think that people should have a right to decide. So there's three seats open, and there's three people that have supported a public vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. All right. Ms. Littlefield, one minute to you.
Thank you. If Prop 420, if it's passed with a yes vote, it will make a small change in the Scottsdale City Charter to allow Scottsdale citizens to vote on whether or not to allow any future commercial development inside the preserve boundaries, either now or in the future. Any such decision, including the one regarding the desert edge, would go to you, the citizens of Scottsdale, and the owners of the preserve, for your consideration. It will take that decision out of the hands of a four-person council majority and put it back in the hands of you, the citizens and the voters of Scottsdale. Everything else remains the same. We have a preserve ordinance which currently governs our preserve. It was written by the people, and it is a pretty good document. I have outlined in green the items that this desert edge or commercial development of any kind would cause to be invalid. It changes our ordinance. Our ordinance itself can be changed by four votes on the city council. It's just no longer strong enough to protect your $1 billion investment in this 30,000 acres of land that we call our preserve. We need this charter amendment to protect your investments and to protect our land here in Scottsdale. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Littlefield.
From the outside looking in, the community of Scottsdale is one defined by affluence, illustrated by million-dollar homes, five-star resorts, and apartment complexes transformed into luxury dwellings. But collateral damage of the age of affluence being enjoyed by many in Scottsdale is forcing a wider gap of economic inequality as outreach numbers surge and legacy residents struggle to make ends meet. About 9% or just over 21,000 human beings live below the poverty line in Scottsdale, which is defined by gross annual income less than 21,954 for a family of four, according to the latest census figures. Here's the question. As real estate values soar in Old Town and southern Scottsdale areas, how do you think the city of Scottsdale can help the aging population of established homeowners find equitable housing and health care options? Ms. Millhaven, to you.
Thank you. Well, your question is about homeowners. And so if folks own their home, if the value of the homes are going up, that's certainly to their benefit. But I think your question is, how do we help folks age in place? And I think some of the services that we provide through our senior centers are absolutely critical to doing that. We've got social workers who can connect folks with local agencies that provide meals and provide health care. We've got an amazing hospital system, and Honor Health is a community hospital. They are required to treat everybody who needs. And so as a city, I think we need to continue to build on those relationships, connect people with the services that are available. And, and one of the other things our senior center does is volunteer, senior volunteers help seniors. And so creating access to those agencies and funding sources and working with, there's also federal monies that we're able to get for our citizens, continuing to pursue those and expand those, I think will help the folks age in place and provide additional services.
Thank you, Ms. Millhaven. Mr. Smith, to you.
Thank you. You did point out an embarrassing and unfortunate statistic, and that is that a large number of our citizens in Scottsdale are not enjoying the good life, if you will. I think our first responsibility as a government is certainly to do no further harm. And that's why I've been a champion for four years of eliminating the sales tax that we have on groceries. An average family of four is going to pay $175 a year just in the local city of Scottsdale, sales tax on food. Phoenix doesn't tax food. Neither does Mesa. Neither does Tucson. The state doesn't. 50% of the people live in a city somewhere that does not tax food, and yet in Scottsdale, we do, to this extreme disadvantage of our neediest citizens. And not only that, if you don't have enough money to buy a house and you have to rent, we figured out a way to tax you twice for that. We tax you as a property tax on the property, and we also tax the sales tax times the rent that you pay. We've got to stop penalizing the people and help them in the ways that have been described by some others.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Littlefield, to you.
Thank you. Actually, this was kind of an interesting question for me. One of the first things I did when I got elected was to work with an organization, a trailer park in South Scottsdale, very low-income housing, called Wheelin Ranch. And we managed to find homes for all of these people. It was very tough, but we did manage to do it. But it really brought home to me the truth that such housing is, is extremely hard to come by here in Scottsdale. And I think from what I've studied since then, it's hard to come by in many cities around the valley. Phoenix, Tempe, Mesa, all of our surrounding cities don't have adequate sources. We do have many critical supplies that the poor of our community need and that we do supply. And I, and I think we do a good job in, in how, in food, clothing, school supplies for children. We, we do a tremendous amount, and the more you look into it, the more you realize what we do do. And we should be very proud of that. But I think that we do need to have some very serious discussions on housing for the poor here in Scottsdale.
Thank you, Ms. Littlefield. I'm sorry, just a minute. Ms. Crawford, to you.
I think that we live in a city where charity is great, and we have a lot of very good programs to help the elderly and, and aging in place. And we also have Section 8 Housing. We have Operation Fix-It. We have city services and senior centers. And I want to, I want to go back to the sales tax. I disagree taking sales tax away from us, especially when we're turning over every flat rock to find out where we can get more money. But the people that pay those sales taxes, they get a great deal of value by living in Scottsdale, and they have trolley service. We have senior citizen centers. We have free fitness centers. We've got access to health care. We have parks. We have all kinds of things. And you take away that funding, we not be, we may not be able to provide those services. And let's not forget where we are. We're in Scottsdale. People do pay more to live here. They make a conscious choice to be here because we appreciate the amenities and the services and the quality of life that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Ms. Whitehead.
So I agree. We can't take away a sales tax today because we have $800 million of unfunded infrastructure needs, and that hurts everybody disproportionately, the poor. As far as seniors, it was a combination of questions that he gave us. As far as the seniors, we do have excellent services in the city, and we need to make those a priority. And again, by reining in spending on things we don't need, we can have more money for the services that benefit all residents and particularly those in need. So we have to upkeep our senior centers. That is a hub of where people find out about other services and, that are available in this county, in the county as a whole, and provide arts classes, all kinds of activities. So we have to maintain the senior centers. That requires money. We have to keep our rides to doctor's appointments and services like that for our seniors that cannot otherwise get to the hospital or a doctor's office. We have to keep those funded. We have to fund our lockbox for seniors program, and that's largely done with volunteers, with realtors, which is great. But that lets fire departments get into a house in an emergency. These are great services. A friend of mine, it actually saved her life.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead.
I'm done? Did you?
Yeah.
Oh, that was quick. Okay, sorry.
So now, we're going to move into audience questions. And let's, I've got 15 of them. So we're going to do 30-second responses. Try to get through as many as we can. And some of them we have touched upon. At about 7:20, though, we got to really start with the closing remarks. So let's get going. First question to each candidate. Do we have a shortage of police protection? And is one reason because they have to And is one reason because they have to pay more attention to the Bar District? Solange, to you, 30 seconds.
Well, we do have a shortage of police, and we, I did meet with the police chief, and he said it's a very long process to get police hired and to get them trained and ready on the street. I am told that we do have a higher level of crime. This is not my area of expertise in the Bar District, and I will be reviewing that to see if we need to have fees somehow have that covered by the businesses there. Thank you.
Thank you, Solange. Mr. Smith, to you.
We will always have a shortage of police and a shortage of firemen because public safety is our primary responsibility here. I think somebody made the comment earlier that 53% of our budget, our entire general fund budget, goes for public safety, police, or fire, those kinds of protections for our citizens. So, we're always going to be looking for opportunities to enhance that. I don't think it's a matter of reining in spending on services we don't need. That's easy to say, but I challenge anybody to tell me where a couple of million dollars of such services are.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Millhaven, to you.
We can be very proud of our police department. In fact, I'm very proud of the work we did looking at police compensation to make sure that we're paying our police officers a competitive salary and keeping pace with the market. We did a comprehensive study of looking at the numbers of officers by crime statistics and by residents, and I'm very proud to say that we should all be proud of the police department that we have.
Thank you, Ms. Millhaven. Ms. Littlefield.
Yes, I will double down on what Linda just said. We have made severe efforts to make sure that we're paid on an equal basis with other cities so we can get the fire and the police officers that we need. It is a very long, long process. They have to go through screening, they have to go to the academy and graduate from that, then they have to have street experience with another officer, which takes that officer's time. And so, in order to get an active officer for police, it takes several years to get that guy on the street and working on his own. And it's very similar with the fire department. They have the same kind of process that they go through. So, it is a long process. We do have an excellent police and fire department in Scottsdale.
Thank you, Ms. Littlefield.
Thank you.
Mr. Crawford, to you.
I agree. We have an excellent public safety program and excellent officers that work with us. But here's the point that we're missing: We're Scottsdale. Why should we be paying equal when we're trying to attract the finest police officers to work in the finest city in America? Something that's not right there. And what we're doing, from what I've heard, is we're running a certification school. Officers are hired in at Scottsdale, they're trained, they're certified, guess what happens? They get hired out. So, we're rolling this over and over and over and over again. We need to look again at how we're compensating our officers and pay them so that they'll stay here and we'll get more value out of their training and certification. And that's just not with the police department, it's with other departments within the city.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Mr. Crawford, to you. How many people have died in the Entertainment District in calendar year 2018?
Two, I believe.
Okay. Anyone else care to respond? How many people have died in the Entertainment District thus far, calendar year 2018?
I think four. I think, I remember reading about several people who were stabbed, murdered on the streets in the Entertainment District, so there's, I would say, at least four.
Okay. I don't know if we can do much more than just guess. Let's move on to this one. Kathy, start us off on this one. Dark money. What is your opinion on the use and funding for campaigns that we don't know the origin of so-called dark money? Ms. Littlefield, to you.
Well, as a victim of dark money last time, I have some rather strong feelings about it. You don't know who is doing it, you don't know why they're doing it, you don't know where the money is coming from or what alternative reasons they're doing it. And I think it's very negative to the campaign cycle that our country has for all elections, not just city council, but from the national on down. I think it was a mistake to make dark money campaigns legal, and I think they should not be happening here in Scottsdale.
Thank you, Ms. Littlefield. No one got away from me. Solange, you're on.
Okay, so, dark money, a very good example is there are large black signs that say, "Protect your preserve, vote no on 420." There is a name on the sign, I know who that person is, and there's a phone number that's not a legitimate phone number. That's dark money. We have no idea. The sole purpose of those signs is to confuse voters to vote against their own interests. That is the kind of undermining of democracy that dark money does. It is the reason that public trust at the city is pretty low right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Mr. Smith, to you. Mr. Smith, to you.
The definition of dark money, and this isn't just a universal term we use, it is a term in political circles referring to the circumstance where an entity collects money anonymously and refuses to disclose the identity of the party. And I am surprised that Solange is unaware of this, and she was a director of a dark money organization herself, which is the Protect Our Preserve 501(c)(4), which collected money anonymously and spent the money through the PAC. And dark money does not come in shades of gray. It doesn't work if we just happen to agree with its agenda. Dark money is what it is. I personally cannot support dark money. I cannot support an activity that is funded by dark money.
Ms. Millhaven, to you.
I believe the voters have a right to know who's contributing to political campaigns, whether it's for an issue or for a candidate, and I am supportive of full disclosure.
Did you respond?
I have not commented on this.
Okay, I was making sure. Bill, it's on you, 30 seconds.
And I know the question.
All right.
I think we should have full transparency. I'm not in favor of people that operate in the dark shadows without full disclosure. We've all been victims of the different campaigns. I've never participated in one side or the other, but I've had things published that I thought were, I'd like to know who said it. I think we have that right.
Thank you, Bill. So, now we're at the time, we have to move into closing remarks. It is 7:17, so if you guys could do 2 minutes and 30 seconds, we'll be right on time. Solange, start us off.
Okay. So, first of all, I want to thank the Scottsdale Independent because they do give every citizen a voice, and they do provide extensive coverage of our city, so thank you. I have to specifically thank Terrence because he's been relentless with homework assignments, which has given us the opportunity to really think about issues that maybe weren't our priority before those questions came along. I also want to thank the Chamber for co-hosting the event. I never associated politics and positive in the same sentence, but in Scottsdale, you can bring those two together. I jumped into this race to protect a preserve, and I have been humbled and inspired by the collective wisdom, the collective kindness, and the willingness of this community to roll up their sleeves, donate $5 and $20 to make Protect Our Preserve possible, and work towards a common good. So, I have actually never been more optimistic in my life than I am by running for office, so that's kind of cool. And I want to say that I'll always be your neighbor, I'll always be your friend. Thank you for being mine, but as your elected official, I will be your public servant, I will be your advocate, and I will be your partner on city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Mr. Smith, to you. Take your time.
Thank you. I want to echo the appreciation to the Independent and to the Chamber of Commerce for engaging in this or setting up this event tonight. I particularly want to thank all of you folks who are here, maybe watching on television, engaged citizens, understanding citizens, people who try to understand the issues. That's the greatest value of our democracy and certainly our city. I told you before, you can find out more about me if you visit the website, Councilman David Smith, look at the blogs that I have written, my positions on issues, and you'll find if I change my position on anything, it's only because you've changed yours. I do represent you. You are my client, and it's not what I believe but what's collectively in the best interest of you, the citizens, that I try to represent. I don't think there is political corruption here at City Hall, as some people have implied. I think that, I think we are serving with the honesty and integrity that we understand and that we think serves you as the citizens. I've been endorsed, as I said, by several people, including the Scottsdale Association of Realtors, and the value of that is that they represent 9,000 people who are out in the community, talking to citizens, understanding the needs and the wants of citizens. And that comes back collectively to saying that, in their opinion, I can represent them well in this position. I intend, if you will, return me to a second term to continue the work that I began in my first. I will continue to fight for the equity for our neediest citizens. I will continue to fight to get rid of these taxes on food and perhaps even rent. These are unfair to our neediest citizens, but we really need tax reform in a global sense. I'll be looking to tax the beneficiaries. I'll be looking to tax the business if they're a beneficiary of some initiative in our city and not giving them a free ride, as we've done in the past. I don't even know how much time I have.
You've got 45 seconds.
I can keep going.
You can keep going. You're good. This is your time.
Let me tell you this. When you, when you go to the ballot, you're going to have an opportunity to vote for three candidates for the council seats up here. I just want one of your votes. I want you to spend one of those votes to return a financial-experienced person to watch your money, to watch how your tax dollars are being spent, and to represent you in that interest. What you do with the other two votes, that's your business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Millhaven, to you.
Thank you. I'm going to share a little bit more around Prop 420 before I go into my closing remarks. And so, the small charter change reads that it will be kept in its natural state except for appropriate restoration efforts and except for trails and trailheads. That's not such a simple thing, and the attorneys are going to take a very literal interpretation of that. What if we want to improve our fire access? What if there's a flood event and we need to build new channels to protect the homes and the people who live south of, below the mountains from future flooding? What if, God forbid, we had a fire? Would revegetating the desert be considered appropriate restoration or maybe not? And so, I think that while the NoDDC folks, which NoDDC is a concept, a 20, 30-year-old concept of an education center, it's interesting, the NoDDC people are trying to protect our preserve, what they're actually trying to fight is that concept of an education center have really gone far beyond that and have really threatened our ability to manage our preserve responsibly. So, improved fire access or better flood control would require a vote of the people and really handcuff the city from doing the best thing for the citizens and for the preserve. That's why I don't support that. In closing, I remember when I was first elected, I heard John Kyle speak, and John Kyle quoted one of his favorite political scientists who said, "The first responsibility of an elected is to bring their best judgment to every decision." And what that means to me is it's my responsibility to listen, to learn, and to consider, and to share what I've learned and to bring that to this conversation. Often, when we're faced with difficult decisions in a kiva full of people with strong emotions, I think more broadly of the 250,000 people who are sitting at home enjoying their dinners and what is the best thing for the greatest good of our community. And so, your decision about who you vote for is who, while you're sitting home having dinner, do you want representing you and making decisions in your behalf? And I hope that my record stands for itself, that my business experience will help us drive a strong economy that keeps our sales and property taxes low, that will create jobs and a robust community that'll allow us to pay for the amenities that we enjoy and the infrastructure that we need. And so, I hope that you will vote for me and allow me to continue to work on your behalf. My name is Linda Millhaven, and you can learn more about me at millhaven4forscottsdale.com. Thank you. Oh, I'm endorsed by the firefighters, the realtors, Mayor Lane, Councilwoman Cordy, and Councilwoman Clapp, among many other people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Millhaven. Ms. Littlefield.
I'm sorry, I was trying to set a timer, and I guess I goofed.
Ms. Littlefield, your turn.
Yes, thank you. Well, good evening to all of you. I too would like to thank the Scottsdale Independent and the Chamber for hosting this event tonight. I am Kathy Littlefield. I would also like to thank all of you here to have given me the opportunity to serve our beautiful city that we all care about so much for about the last four years. During this election, I have been honored to receive the endorsements of both the police and the firefighters, as well as COGS, our city's citizen organization that works for the betterment of all of us. Over the past four years, I have made good on my pledge to you, to listen to you, the citizens, and to be your voice on council, to work to keep Scottsdale beautiful and gracious and as the city that we all love to live in. Along that line and to continue that pledge, tonight I urge you to vote yes on both Prop 420 and on question one. Protect our preserve and your $1 billion investment in this land. Vote yes to amend the charter to give yourselves the power to vote on to protect or preserve, on what you want to build in it and what you don't want to build in it. This should be your right. You voted five times to give money to buy the land, to build the trails and the trailheads, and we did that. They say we also have in our ordinance to do an education center, and they're right, we do, and we've already built it. It's at the trailheads, it's at the gateway. It's the stewards who have studied and take walks and give talks about all of the lands and the animals that are available for you to see and enjoy in the preserve. Protect this preserve. It is one of the main things that keeps Scottsdale special, and I don't want this issue to be confused or negated for the profit of some and at the expense of you. Keep control of your investment by voting yes. I also urge you to vote yes on question one. Let us get our $170 million of already paid sales taxes from Maricopa County back to Scottsdale, where we can use it for our streets and our sidewalks. We also add that $70 million that will be the income stream and add that to the 170. We'll have $240 million for our streets and our transportation needs. Let's get that money here to Scottsdale so we can use it. If I am re-elected, I will continue my job of working for you, the citizens of Scottsdale. I believe this is the definition of the job as a council member on the city council. We are elected by you, the people, and we are responsible to you, the people of the city. If you believe that too, I ask for the honor of your support and your vote in the upcoming election. In return, I pledge to continue being your voice on council. You can find out more about me and my platform by going to my website, kathylittlefield.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Littlefield. Mr. Crawford, take us home.
Okay. I want to go to work for you. I've been working for you. I'm not an unknown factor. I don't have to sit up here and make promises because you know what I have done, you know what I'm capable of doing. And there's a lot of things you don't know. You don't know the behind-the-scenes work that I've done on a lot of the big projects in Scottsdale. You don't know some of the efforts that I made behind the scenes with public safety, solving some problems in the Bar District. So, I'm tough, but I'm fair, and I bring people together. And it doesn't matter how bad the fight is to get stuff done. When it's over, we walk away as friends. And you know, most of the organizations that I've been involved with, when I came in on an entry level, I worked hard, I got things done, and I think in just about every case I can remember, I was elevated to top leadership, either chairman of the board or president. There's a reason for that because I get things done, and I'm a good leader, and I will solve a lot of problems in this community. So, take advantage of my skill sets. I've been in business for 42 years around the world. I've done a lot, a lot of negotiation, a lot of projects, things that most people don't know about. Take advantage of my experience and training in law enforcement, mountain rescue, volunteer fire department. I have an insight that is unique to me on this council. There's a lot of people that haven't seen the backside of these things like I have, and I can help that. I can help you live in a better community because of my experience. There's a reason that I've been endorsed by the Scottsdale Area Association of Realtors. There's a reason... There's a reason I've been endorsed by our mayor and several other former council members and current council members. I can work with people, and that's something we need to know. I'm not going into this in opposition, I'm not going into this uninformed or uneducated. I know the city frontwards and backwards, I know the preserve frontwards and backwards. My wife and I either hiked, rode horses, or rode bikes in that preserve for the last 20 years. It's very dear to me, just like the mountains around the hometown that I grew up in. And I will work hard to protect all of our assets, including your own property values. That's what it's really all about. Our infrastructure, the shine on our city, our tourism, our new business development, our new residents creating job sites so that our kids don't have to leave town to get a job. You know, most cities have economic development councils that scour the world to try to find projects to bring to town. We have them knocking on our doors, and we're not paying them to do it, they're bringing in their own money, they're creating their own jobs. I am pro-business, pro-development in certain areas, and very, very guarding of the areas that we have set aside to preserve for our quality of life. My name's Bill Crawford, I'd appreciate your vote. If you want to know more about me, Crawford4, F-O-R, council.com. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. And with that, thank you for attending our city council debate. Please give a round of applause for our candidates. And that's all we got. Have a good night.